We will now call our special work session meeting to order April 24th, 2018. We will call it to order and we will go right into our strategic planning. Or before that, I think there's something that the superintendent, we're turning it over to the superintendent right now.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. The Florida School Board Association beginning this year presents awards to school board members in the entire district and board who've earned a certified board member distinction through the FSBA. So today we have Ms. Kelly Owens. She's FSBA Leadership Services Consultant, also a resident in Okeechobee, used to be on Okeechobee School Board, and I believe now is on the City Commission?
County, yes.
County Commission?
Yes.
Moving on.
Momentary lapse of judgment there.
And so I'm gonna ask Kelly if she can come on up and present her award.
Thank you. Come around this way. Good morning and thank you. I feel like it's Old Home Week because this board is one of the most stable boards I think I've seen in a long time. It's just a pleasure to come here year after year and see the camaraderie that I see and to see this same steady group that is here. There's a lot of history here and you all do fantastic things for your students. So it's always a pleasure to come and to be able to spend time with you. School board members come from all walks of life and there's much to learn when you go from being a citizen to an elected official. And there, other than those wonderful four hours of mandated ethics training that we have to sit through, there's no other specific or required training for school board members to take. And so that's what makes this a very special award today. Dr. Donna Mills is who I'm here to recognize. A school board member in order to receive this distinction, which is the Certified Board Member, must attend 96 hours of voluntary training and education. And Dr. Mills has done just that. So this shows her dedication toward becoming an effective board member for everyone who is involved, all the stakeholders involved, in the St. Lucie County School District. And it is my pleasure to introduce and present this award to Dr. Donna Mills as a Certified Board Member. If you would join me up here. You're welcome. I appreciate your time today.
Thanks for coming over this morning.
Absolutely.
I worked for Kelly before in another area.
Yes, another life, another life somewhere else.
We'll leave it back. Yeah, true.
Thanks for the presentation.
Absolutely. My pleasure. My pleasure. Yes ma'am. You all have a wonderful one, Sean. Good seeing you.
You can hang out if you want.
Oh, well, I have to go back to my other life early rest of the day, too. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Okay. Couple of things this morning. We are going to hear from our architect and John in a minute, and then Helen's gonna make a presentation. We have really some good, strong professional development opportunities that we're gonna be doing this summer. One of the most important things that we have to do is to build our teacher capacity and our administrator, all of our capacities. And so we've really put a heavy emphasis on that. We want to talk a little bit about the grant that we've got, where we're gonna be able to get some dollars into a couple of our schools and Helen will... So it's really the Helen Show today, Dr. Wild. And then she'll close out with a summer slide and we'll be sharing the information this is the board has. And I know many of you, all of you are involved in agencies that are out there. And this will be available to the different agencies, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the different summer camps that are going on. We will then go into a attorney-client shade meeting and that should be very brief as well as an executive session after that. And then I have, obviously I just have one order of business before we go into the meeting on a date for a board meeting in July that I'll talk to you all about and try to get attention on that. So Mr. John Gillette.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Mr. Jett. We just came to give you a short update on the construction progress with May. This has been a busy month. I know in exciting building, a building, you want to see things happen, but there's so much preparation order to what goes under the ground that it's taking some time away from seeing what visually, but pretty soon we're gonna start going vertical. This month, we've done our permitting, we've done our due diligence with the local counties and municipalities. We have a pre-bid meeting at St. Lucie West, which by the way, we had more local participation than any job I've ever seen us do, projects since I've been here. Local contractors from the whole area representing the workforce in St. Lucie County participated with great quality companies in there. It was very encouraging. And this Friday, we opened the bids for Phase One, which will be clearing the land, putting the civil in and things like that, getting concrete prepared for the slab. And you'll be seeing that on the first board agenda this month. So I'm gonna let Mr. Hayden Curtis from Fornio, Denario and Associates to run through the slides for you and answer any questions you may have.
Morning, everybody. Hayden Curtis, partner with Denario and Associates Architects of Bureau Beach. And it's my pleasure to give you this board update. We'll start off with... This is gonna be the content of the update. We'll start off with the design, the site plan, the first floor plan, north wing, south wing, boardroom wing, and we'll go onto the second floor plan, third floor plan, conceptual elevation, the project schedule in terms of design and construction. Need three hands. This is the final site plan. We have the main circulation route here and here. This is the site proper. The dark green delineates a required 30-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site. The gray is parking, and as you can see, there's a lot of it. We have about 450 cars, 140 of which are what we call grass parking, consolidated grass. And they're located down here and down here, adjacent to that property line. And the advantage of this is when you look at the site, it gives you the appearance of a 50-foot landscape buffer as opposed to 30-foot, which psychologically is a good thing. There are three points of entry into the site, one here, one here, and this is the main entry and egress. People will pull in there, they'll drive up to the front of the building, which is here, drop off passengers. People are light into the building, turn around and they'll go park or leave the site. This section of the parking here is devoted to board members. And there's a private entry door from their parking directly into the boardroom, which saves them having to go around to the front of the building and going through the public entrance. This is the main lobby where security is. And then we have a three-story wing here, a three-story wing here, and this is the boardroom and training room. This is our conceptual floor plan of the first floor. This is the covered entry into the building, two pairs of double doors. This will be the security area. Everyone will have to check in at security to get clearance before they go into the first floor lobby and atrium. The headroom in this area will be about 11 feet, but once you go through these doors, part of that ceiling height will be at about 35, 36 feet, which is an atrium. And in that space, we'll have a three-story stair plus elevators connecting the upper levels. Once you're in the building, you can go straight forward into the boardroom, or you can go to the left to the Human Resource, Security Records, and Alternative Education Departments, or to the right to Testing, Publication, Maintenance, Mail Room, and then on the extreme right there, the Chili Yard. Now, this is a blow-up of the north wing. And you'll see here we have, as you come from the lobby here into through these doors, secure doors, we have student assignment in this area, Human Resources opposite, on the other side of the corridor, records in this corner here. This would be security and then next to that, Alternative Ed. The gray, which really doesn't appear right here, is a common area. It's circulation, it's stairs, corridors, and in this case, an elevator and some storage. This is the opposite wing. This is the south wing. And again, into the secure area here. This would be publications, it could be on this wall side of the corridor here, and also spread onto this side of the corridor. This is Maintenance and Receiving. This would be Testing. This little section here is the Mail Room. And again, the gray area is circulation. And in this case, it's the stair, the corridor. We have mechanical and electrical rooms here. Then we have toilet rooms, and then these are the public toilet rooms of the main lobby. This is the boardroom wing. Again, once you're through the security area, you have access to all departments. When you come to the boardroom, you come in through these pair of doors, this pair of doors. We have two elements of storage on the left and the right, and then this center component is the control room. This is the main space. It can be divided into, it can be one space, it can be divided into three spaces, or actually it can be divided into five spaces by the use of sliding folding partitions. This door here is your private entrance and your parking is here. You come up behind the diaphragm in this corner, there is a unisex restroom and a small break This is the conceptual second floor plan. You get up here by the stairs or the elevator and directly here, you have the knock room, which is where all your computer equipment will be housed. On the left there, you'll have computer and ITS departments, and on the right, food service in ESC and SS departments. Third floor, get up the same way by the stairs or the elevator. Directly opposite to you is the superintendent's suite, the board members' offices, the media studio and communications. To the left, you have Business Services, Media Offices, and Legal Departments. And to the right, you have Teaching and Learning. The second and third floor are conceptual plans, but we have the working drawings at 95% complete now for those second and third floors, and they'll be issued next week to the various departments to review. Now, this is a very, very preliminary exterior elevation, but what it does do, it serves to indicate the scale and the mass of the building, which I think is very important. From here to there is probably about 42 feet. There are concrete tilt wall panels with holes punched in them for windows. Because of the geometry of the building, we have windows on the north, south, east and west. But on the south, east and west, we will actually incorporate sun shades into the windows to A, cut out solar heat gain, but B, allowing a lot of natural light into the interior of the offices, which psychologically I think is important for the inhabitants. This was a very preliminary idea for a drop-off. It has changed significantly. And then behind that, we have the three-story atrium. Now, this is the product schedule. The first six items are complete. That is programming, the South Florida Water Concept Pre-Application, the Building Footprint, the Site Plan, and the Civil Site Plan. They're all complete. The Care to Site Plan has been submitted on March 14th. South Florida and DEP permitting was on the 9th of April, and the contractor expects to have those permits in hand by May the 1st. The Phase One bid package is out. It's in the process of being bid, and Phase One Construction will start on May the 5th. Phase Two Bid Package for the Foundations will be issued on May the 5th and under construction June 12th. Phase Three Construction Documents, which is the bid package for the building, will be issued on May 12th. And Phase Three Construction will start on July the 12th, and you will be in occupancy the summer of 2019. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, board? Any comments? Looks like you did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hayden.
All right. And then we'll work out a John and Terrence, like groundbreaking ceremony. We'll figure that out, you know, when everybody's here. Bring in the turtle. Maybe you can take a turtle home.
Take a turtle home. Oh, you'll love one. Sure, let's put this on TV.
Okay. All right. Dr. Wild, would you please come on up for your presentation?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Jett. Very pleased to be here today. As Mr. Jett said, we do have three topics to share with you this morning. And we're gonna begin with Summer Professional Development Plan. And Mrs. Rodriguez is our Director of Talent Development. She's here to assist as well if there are any questions. I think at this time, she's passing out the PowerPoint and the PD catalog. So I'm gonna start with reviewing what we did last summer. Last summer was the first summer in a long time where we really upped the number of professional development offerings for our teachers primarily. And we did have 1,285 teachers participate last year in all of the various offerings. We had developed and offered 31 new sessions, five online sessions. That is becoming a much more popular option for our teachers and administrators, and three conferences. But even with all of that great increase, we have really put a lot of effort this summer into increasing it even more so. And this time, we are up from 33 to 109 total courses for teachers, staff, and administrators between the dates of June 4th and July 26th. That's a total of 885 hours of professional development with 4,547 seats available. So of course, teachers can participate in multiple sessions if they choose to. And many of these sessions are stipended so that the individuals coming out during the summer will be paid through various funding sources, different types of grants, depending on the focus of each training. There's three major focus areas this summer when we really break down our offerings. Heavy emphasis on continuing to deepen our teachers' knowledge on teaching the Florida standards, and also instructional strategies that engage students such as cooperative learning, thinking maps, CHAMPs for classroom management, anything that helps enhance students' ability to learn and come to school every single day. And in addition, we are doing a lot these days to increase the technology knowledge of our teachers for real, meaningful technology integration in the classroom. With a focus on the standards, we have a lot of focus on our ELA and Math Standards Institutes that began last summer and will continue. The ELA is broken down into three tiers, three levels, and depending on where a teacher is in their knowledge, they can finish up the last one they haven't done yet, or they can start from the very beginning and pace themselves. We also have two leveled modules for all classroom teachers, and this is K through 12, by the way, for the Math Standards Institute. And this year, we've also added a math boot camp, which is specifically focused on the hard-to-teach standards for the first quarter, so that teachers are spending part of their summer thinking about how they'll get their students off to a great start next year. In addition, we are doing Science and Social Studies training, making sure that everyone really knows how to use the great resources that we have available for them within their textbooks and our online resources. Our new learning management system is called Canvas, and we continue to develop and build that out. Last year, we started utilizing it with five online courses, and this summer, we're offering 14 online courses. We're spending a lot of time with developing those courses so that there is some flexibility for, so that every individual, no matter what their summer plans are, can participate. Due to changing legislation and an increased need to have more people with reading endorsements, we are offering two reading endorsement classes this summer. And additional reading endorsement classes are available through Fiddler's. And I know you have the presentation itself, but you also have the catalog of offerings. So everything that I'm talking about is in that catalog, which is available to our teachers with the specifics of date and times. It's available to them electronically as well, and it's in Frontline, which is our new professional development software. In addition, we do not want any teachers to, for any reason, not be able to return to us. And so we've increased the number of ESOL endorsement classes that we now have available. We have three courses offered this summer in ESOL endorsement. We also have ESOL courses for administrators that are also online. And I just wanted to make a note of the dramatic increase we've seen in our participation in ESOL, from 150 seats to 350 seats. People are signing up for those very, very quickly. And so we will not have a need to non-reappoint for ESOL endorsements. So I know Raphael and his staff is very happy about that. We have a very strong partnership with Microsoft, and our departments work very closely with Terrence O'Leary with this partnership. And through Microsoft, we are able to offer these new learning pathways for teachers to learn how to use all of the resources that are already at their fingertips, so they can use them to engage their students, save themselves time. They're phenomenal tools that are in Microsoft Office. We've started a new focus also for our administrators to make sure that we are utilizing these tools to make their work more efficient, make sure that they know what's available to them and that they don't go unused. We started already on March 19th, training all of our administrators on how to use Skype for business. That allows them to stay at their school sites, involve anyone they want to from their school sites, and interact with us or any of our departments from any location. And now that they know how to use it, we're doing weekly voluntary Skype meetings for administrators to teach them all of the different tools within Microsoft. So how to use the Teams component, OneNote, forums where they can do surveys, collaborate with others through their Microsoft. Denise is also gonna pass out to you a little booklet that really was put together just for your use, but it's a collection of all of the marketing materials, the flyers that are going out to accompany the catalog, so that teachers know, we can catch their eye and get their excitement. We're sending these out regularly through Weekly Blast, Talent Development Twitter account is being used, and every way that we can possibly communicate these to our teachers, they're going out. So that booklet is just all of them combined. You can see there's the Social Studies VBQ training up here on the slide. We've pulled out the ELA Summer Standards Institute and the Math Standards Institute flyers. You can see they each look very different to capture interest. We've got Growth Mindset Training going on. Those are in the Engagement Strategies, as well as Thinking Maps. You can see the flyer about ESOL Summer Course Offerings. That way, somebody can really know if this course is for me or not based on what I've already been trained in. Math Strategies for ESC Teachers, Word and Excel. One of the other important things is to make sure that our technology-based training is leveled, so that if I feel like I'm pretty good at it, I can sign up for the advanced level, and if I've never tried to use it before, I can sign up as a novice. So we are leveling those. That's, we're finding that to be a key to success. And in closing on the Summer Professional Development, we also have our annual Summer Leadership Conference, June 6th and 7th, for all of our administrators. And then our Leadership Kickoff Day, which is scheduled for Thursday, July 26th, at Treasure Coast High School as well. And then our new this year for our three magnet schools, Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, CAST, and Fort Pierce Westwood, all of their teachers, 100% of their faculty, will be participating in a three-day Magnet School Fall Symposium. They have a great keynote speaker and a lot of very relevant information planned for them. And then ending with our New Teacher Symposium, August 2nd and 3rd, which this year will be at Fort Pierce Central High School.
Helen, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
We'll give this to the board, but the June 6th, 7th, the Leadership Kickoff, some of those, we'll invite board members, we invite each year to the end of the year and the kickoff. And there might be some, you know, I know you have the New Teacher Symposium, so pretty much anything up there.
Good for you.
If you're around.
Good for you.
And we would also like to invite you to the first day of the Magnet School Symposium, too. That day's gonna be very engaging.
So we'll get Chris to get that information out to everybody.
Okay. Any questions about professional development at all, or as it relates to summer?
Just, I want to say thank you for the ESOL, picking up that, because that has been a thorn in our side for years, trying to get everybody certified, and now it's 100% online, so people can do it that have children and a second job, and it meets the need that we've been looking for. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Helps our teachers a lot.
And we're also offering it face-to-face for people who prefer to learn in that style.
It looks like a great summer conference of professional development, and it looks like it's really covering all of the necessaries here to produce success with each of our students. So we thank all of you for your tremendous work in making it happen, and if our teachers are better prepared, our students will be better prepared.
Thank you. We do have four amazing teachers in the Talent Development Department that put all this together. They do a great job and work very closely with curriculum as well. I'd like to personally thank them for everything they do as well.
Do we have any questions, board? Any more comments? Thank you, Ms. Wild.
Okay. Next topic is related to grant-funded incentives for teachers. And these are not new grants. These are grants that we've talked about before, but with a focus today just on those parts of the grants that are being used to incentivize our teachers for recruitment and most certainly retention. So I'm just gonna highlight a few for you. We've covered this before, but it's the School Improvement Grant. You'll hear it referred to as SIG IV. And this particular grant applies to CA Moore Elementary School and St. Lucie Elementary School. And overall, it provides for family engagement activities. But the part we're focused on today is ambitious instruction and recruitment and retention. So as part of that concept, they challenged us in this grant to try something we have not done before, to see if it works, so we can share the results with the state. And we are using the Master Teacher Coach Concept, and that is one individual, one teacher per grade level, two of third departmentalized in fourth and fifth, designed to recruit proven turnaround teachers to want to go to these two schools and serve in this capacity. Dual, there's a dual interest here. One, we still want them to directly teach our students, because they have such positive impact on our students that need them. So for a big portion of the day, they are classroom teachers teaching. What is different is that they will, during certain parts of the day, be released to coach their colleagues, but only within one grade level. So unlike an instructional coach at a school that has to cover, in these two schools, has to cover K through 5, content and all of teachers, with this model, they are covering only a grade level's content and only a small group of teachers. So they can become experts in that content, provide coaching, mentoring, give feedback to teachers, serve as a model classroom, and so on. The entire role of an instructional coach. So with that being said, there's several reasons why some of our highly effective teachers would want to do it. It is an 11-month position, and it gives, therefore gives, the school principal time with those talented individuals to plan for the next year, support summer planning, and so on. And it's an attractive, you know, increase in salary, could be seen as a promotion for those individuals. We're looking for future leaders who may want to go into the Elite Program and become turnaround leaders in the future. So they're immersed in that setting, and they're getting a chance to utilize their leadership skills. And the last bonus there is probably important these days, as classroom teachers, they remain eligible for all other classroom teacher bonuses, such as the ones that we provide or the state does. The grant allows us to pay the extra month salary. We are providing negotiated bonuses that our bargaining partners are involved in. So in addition to the 11-month salary, they get an additional bonus, and they have that additional time for coaching. additional time for coaching. For SIG4, which is this grant here, this is for all classroom and non-classroom teachers, the recruitment bonus. And this one is a little different, because this is for all teachers at the school, not just the master teacher. We built that into the same grant. So we are negotiating the budget and amount that we have for it. Our bargaining partners work with us on that, and those bonuses will be for any teacher that is rehired to return next year by the principal, or teachers that are hired new to go to those schools. So that is SIG4. And then we also have UNISIG, which includes Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, Weatherby Elementary, and St. Lucy Elementary. Those were the three schools that qualified. This is the grant that we use to provide the teacher's aides to round out the reading intervention, LLI materials, and to enhance technology at those three schools. But in addition, in the middle there, you see that we did also tie some financial incentives for the teachers. And those include a $1,500 bonus to all of the teachers if the school earns a C or better, which they are definitely on track to do that at all three sites. And they meet the negotiated attendance goals that we set. We did actually include an attendance goal to this part of the bonus, so that we could be assured that our students would have their teachers in front of them, and that started at the second half of the year, so that we need fewer subs, and their classroom teachers will be there with them while the students are in attendance. In addition, the teachers that work at those three sites have a chance to earn an additional thousand on top of the 1,500, and that is for teachers who return for 18, 19, and meet the student performance goals that we set. And they vary depending on what the teacher teaches. We did cover science, ELA, and math. And so at those three sites, since we are looking for the best and the brightest to, to serve the needs of those students, they do have these opportunities with these additional grants. And then the last grant is really the MSAP grant, the Magnet School Grant for those three schools. We're in the process of currently recruiting teachers, and we did have a very successful teacher fair this past Saturday. I want to thank all of the departments that came out and supported that effort. As they are recruiting classroom teachers, especially in those very specialized areas, they also have some opportunities to recruit future leaders that want to serve in the role of STEAM advocates. This is new as well. And this is a team of teachers that will be pulled from all three school sites that will help us keep the grant moving, documenting the, any, any goals that we set, you know, our progress towards them, but also advising on professional development. They will formally work with our Talent Development Department to make sure that the training that is provided over the course of the next five years at those three schools really pushes the goals and, and moves that school forward, all three schools forward. And those folks are 11-month, they're classroom teachers, teaching whatever their content area is on an 11-month contract. So it is, again, an increase in salary. We are looking for aspiring leaders, strong teachers that are really good at the talent development side, and really looking for those high-level technology skills. And so this gives us an opportunity to compete a little bit more with some of the other jobs those folks could get if they worked in their industry or their field of expertise. And again, I want to thank everyone involved in making these grants possible, helping us to implement them. The administrators at the school sites have been fantastic, and our bargaining partners, because almost all of these are also negotiated and LUS are developed. Any questions around incentives for teachers?
Okay, Ms. Helen, Dr. Helen, you already gave a shout out to everyone else. We want to also thank you for your efforts as well, and, and everyone in all the departments in regarding the grant ability that we have gotten to be able to do so much more here in St. Lucy County Schools. Thank you so much, Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you as well.
You're welcome.
Before she goes on, one of the things that we're doing, and we did have a, like a job fair this past Saturday at Sam Gaines for teachers that are interested, and we had internal teachers as well as, I believe, external. And so it's important to understand, and I'll talk to the principals about this, too. When I used to teach civics, first year I ever taught, I taught capitalism, about capitalism, and competition is the lifeblood of capitalism, so it's competition. So we kept, you know, we're, we compete in a lot of different ways, but we're a team, and we're a school district. We're not a district of individual schools. We're a team school district. And so some folks may choose to leave a school wherever, to come to work in, in, in a, in one of these schools as well, that are our own folks, and that could lead to a vacancy there. But it's really a, a team effort on what's in the best interest of the boys and girls that we serve, and what's in the best interest of our community. And just, and then what we would expect from our principals is good protocol, that if somebody's talking to them, and they're interested in that person, that they would call them, you know, call the individual and say, hey, so-and-so is, I'm interested in hiring so-and-so that comes from your school, so we don't leave anybody hanging later in the year. So it's something that our principals have done a really nice job of as well, and we want to continue to do that. Just in case you hear any, any noise or alarm boxes sometimes with that, that it's a, it's, we're trying to recruit teachers actively, recruit teachers in some harder, hard-staffed schools, hard-staffed schools, and through the grants and through some of the money and some of the bonuses and things like that, which is tied to accountability, we're able to do that. But it's part of the team effort within our school district. And again, I want to echo the comments made, that I want to thank Helen and her team and Denise for really the first two presentations. We'll see how the third one goes, but the first two, what we've done with the, with the leadership development, what we've done with the, both with staff development for our teachers, professional development. You shouldn't have to get in a, get on a plane and go somewhere. Staff development should be something that we can offer right here at home as well, although there's good stuff out there sometimes. You know, we want to make sure that we can offer that right here to our staff, so I want to commend them for what they're doing. And then the third part of her presentation will deal with the summer slide.
Okay, so summer slide, I'm really excited about this one. As you know, we started this last year, and the rollout, the big rollout for this year will be May 15th, about the same time we did it last year. And we've added just a few new components, so I really want to focus on what we've added and why we've added. But just in case you haven't heard it, we wanted to share this.
The VPK to Grade 12 Resources. VPK to Grade 12 Resources. We have posted on our homepage to support your students' summer group. Hello, I'm Wayne Jen, Superintendent of St. Lucy Public Schools. During the summer month, there's a tendency for students to look at some of the achievement gains they've made during the school year. Don't let that happen to your child. Visit stlucyschools.org and explore the VPK to Grade 12 Resources. We have posted on our homepage to support your students' summer group. Take a closer look at our summer slide program. You'll like what you see. Don't let the summer slide away. Visit stlucyschools.org today.
Is that it? Is it done?
Yeah, and on a, and on a high note. No, I do want to take a moment to share some of the upgrades and additions that we've made. We continue to add to this site and this collection of resources on an ongoing basis, but we know from talking to Dr. Mills and others within the community, that our summer camps and our, our summer providers really want to take advantage of this site. We wanted to make it more clear to them how they could do that. And so if you look up on the slide there, this is what one of the pages looks like, and the icon to the right is going to be large and grab people's attention, so they can get directions on how to use some of the key resources for their summer programs. Now, I will say, we are still available to provide assistance. Last year, Jane Whitaker and Liz Pruitt met with a lot of camp providers, and they can continue to do so. But this will make it easier for anyone that wants to use it. So bottom right, when they click on that, they'll, they'll see something that looks just like this. They'll be allowed to scroll down. First, it explains, you know, that we appreciate what they do for our students, and then it gives them directions. For example, with iReady, because they are not school board employees, they don't have access to the confidential reports within there, but the student can access all of the robust content. So we're explaining those types of things with that particular link. And then, in addition, if you look where it says "Resources for VPK, Resources for K through five," those were already there, and those are for parents. But we've added the one that says "Summer Camp Resources." So we've pulled them out specifically for our camp providers. And when they go to the site, they're going to see also broken down into STEM activities, math activities, literacy, and so forth. This is an example of what the STEM activities would look like. They can, and we could click on any one of these, and it's an activity to do with students, and it gives them step-by-step directions, what they will need to pull off this type of hands-on activity. So if I happen to be running a STEM camp, or if I'm an outdoor camp and I have a rainy day to prepare for, I can easily go to this resource without having to go anywhere else. This is a literacy, an example of literacy. This site provides free resources, but actually a daily wonderin'. So camp providers could use this every single day, where it's just an inquiry-based topic, all sorts of topics, but it involves literacy activities. And we know, because these have all been vetted, that they support our standards, they support where we want our students to be over the summer. So that's an example of a literacy activity. If I click on this link, and you can, because it's live, if anyone wants to see anything, it would take you to the DOE website, because they this summer have put out a literacy challenge. And so a camp provider could pull this up, have students sign the literacy pledge, and this is actually set up as a competition between districts to get students to read over the summer. That's just one example of what's on there. There's coding activities that students can go to, and you'll see they're marked by grade level. These examples, many of them are grade two, but all grade levels are covered throughout. These are samples, they're games, they're highly engaging. So of course, the camp would have to have computers, but they can have a chance to prep their entire summer schedule by utilizing this site. We've, we've updated all the web addresses if anything was no longer live. We've, we've addressed that to make sure it's still perfect. We've added resources based on feedback, and as I said at the beginning, we continue to enhance this site, but today's focus was really about the addition of summer camp activities.
Those, the, the information on the web, the websites, and the parents can do that as well.
Yes.
Have access to that.
Yes.
So we're going to do a big blast as well to the parents, where we'll communicate that information to them as well, so that anyone can, don't necessarily have to be in camp, where you can have access to all this material as well, and make sure that the, our parents are aware of that throughout the, throughout the county. And, you know, there's some fun stuff on there.
And we'll also do a blast to our, to our teachers, because we want them to be encouraging the students to use it. They could even assign things out of it for students to complete over the summer. Any questions?
You know how excited I am. This is great. This is great.
Excuse me, go ahead.
This is great in regards to summer camps in schools and preparing and so forth. I wanted to ask a question about the STEM activity. Are they something that a camp can do within one day, or is it something that...
Yes, and going back to this slide, if they go to the activity, it will tell them the duration. All the ones I looked at were like one-day activities, sort of like a lab. So it'll tell you how long it takes, it'll tell you exactly what to gather together for it, why you're doing it, what the point is, so you don't necess, you don't have to be a, a STEM expert yourself to, it's, it's right there for you.
And when will we get this out to the summer camps? Because I'm looking at giving them time to prepare based on what we're sending out as a, as a public school, where they can do their whole scheduling of their summer activities.
The whole site is going live May 15th, so we'll do a blast. If, if any club wants to have access to it sooner, we could give it to them in draft form, but as we continue to build it out, May 15th is the drop date, everything will be perfect. We also, just a note, we also included on that first page information about Boys and Girls Club, because they are one of our partners, and they utilize MobiMax, and we worked with them to help with that selection. So we put a note on there that we endorse that selection, so that any of their parents know that it's not taking them in another direction. It supports what we do in public schools.
And then Chair of our...
In contract for everybody, it gets contracted, Children's Services Councils pay for summer camps or program programming. This is an expectation. If not, an expectation next year will be a demand.
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I need to clarify what Mr. Jen said. Now, does that mean anybody may be moving new to the community that doesn't have a child enrolled in our schools? This is open to everybody in the community. Is there a version Hispanic for Hispanic-speaking parents and Creole-speaking parents?
Yeah, yes, in answer to your entire question, this is open to anybody. It's, it's public, and all they do is go to our website. It's all available to everybody. There are also ESOL activities, I didn't mention that, but there are activities for our children who are speakers of other languages. I don't believe that every single site is translated into native languages, but some of them are. We have provided that. The only restriction on anyone moving new to the community would be in something like iReady, because that student wouldn't already have an account set up, but everything else would be available to them.
Did you mention there was a competitive part with the reading literacy?
There is.
In our schools, how much reading a kid does on the iReady classroom.
The, that competition is from DOE, and it is a literacy challenge, and that is not about iReady, that is about reading books. So the students go in individually and pledge to read a certain number of books. The state is collecting all that information across, for every school district, and they're doing a competition between districts. And in the district that wins, the First Lady Scott is going to come out and read to students in that district.
Now, are these books online, or they have to get the books from the library or somewhere else, and then...
They can do it either way.
It is online that they can pull the books?
Well, they could pull books online, yes, because we do have books available online, or they could go to the library, they could use their own books. There's no real restrictions on that DOE competition. And I know Carrie will help us with blasting that out. I think she already has, actually. Is that one you have? I'm not sure.
When are we going to make our own ice cream?
You can do that at an end-of-year event if you want. Leadership Symposium.
Next board workshop, we'll make our own ice cream.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, great job. We are in the process of going to do our accreditation, and Dr. Prince is going to make a two-minute, two-minute presentation on that. No pressure.
That's not what we're talking about.
The visiting, you know, the visiting, the visiting team will be coming in a couple of weeks, and we greet them. Not as many schools yet that they're going to come, come to, and I just wanted, as I, I just wanted the board to be aware that that was going to happen. And he's just going to give a brief, brief overview, and then I'll make a couple comments, and then we can go straight over to, we're going to have it there for our attorney-client shape and meeting.
Good morning. Who's my timekeeper? No, he'll be. So we've got our accreditation process. We went through this five years ago, and this is a real short, just sharing kind of what's going on. On May 6th, that, their team is going to, going to arrive, and we have them put up in hotels, Hilton Garden Inn in St. Lucy West. On that day, that evening, the superintendent and the leadership team will meet them, just to meet and greet prior to them having dinner. And then the next day, on Monday, the 7th, they will be transported by us here to Alapata Flats. It's a little bit different than it's been in the past, where in the past, they would go out to school centers and interview stakeholders. This time, a lot of this process has changed. The stakeholders actually will be here, and they will have those interviews actually here, after the leader, the superintendent will present kind of a points of pride of district, and also the leadership team will also do a presentation of kind of what processes we have in our schools. That, at that time, on May 7th, that Monday, those teams will be sent out to a total of eight different school centers. And they will be conducting a brief interview with the principals, and then also go out to the classrooms, and they have a, basically a, a score sheet that they use whenever they go out to the classroom, and they're really focusing on student engagement, not so much interviewing staff. It's really about what are the kids learning and what kind of engagement occurs at the schools. So once they conclude in the morning on Tuesday, then they'll have lunch at the school, and then they'll be transported to their next school. They're in groups of twos, and they will continue on with their interview, brief interview with the principal, and then classroom walkthroughs. And then on Wednesday, they'll have their report to the superintendent, and then the superintendent will eventually share that with you. So we're excited about it, simply because we've got so many things to be proud of, and it's a great opportunity to showcase our school centers. So I think I'm right at two minutes, Mr. Jen, so, but that will be in just two weeks. So we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Dropping the mic.
If you have any other questions on this, or, you know, need information, we can get that to you. Before we break, I just wanted to...
So I think I'm right at two minutes, Mr. Jen, so, but that will be in just two weeks, so we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Dropping the mic.
If you have any questions on this, or, you know, need information, we can give that to you. Before we break, I just want to talk about two things. We have graduations starting in a, in a, within a few weeks, and last year, we did not do a work session during, during the month of May, so it was probably if the board was okay with that, unless there was a need for something, post not have that, but we will do it in June. The one in June would be the last Thursday in June, and I would do like they did last year at the work, work session, to really talk about the year, the year, the goals that I had established for the district, and do that presentation, and then we would have the July 10th board meeting. What I want to propose to you all, that meeting that we had last year, July 10th, literally lasted about 10 minutes, it was about 15 minutes long. We don't have presentations or, or booths coming in, kids, let's see if the board was interested in doing like a 9:00 or 10:00 a.m. board meeting instead of the 5:00 p.m. one, and just do it in the morning, we have staff here already, and come in and maybe we'll do the ice cream thing then. But it'll probably be a very short meeting, we can do an update on, whatever we need to do an update on, but just throwing that out there, we're going to do it on July 10th, we'll do it 9:00 o'clock or 10:00 a.m. in the morning here, if we do it in the auditorium.
Do you have any discussion, board?
9:00?
Yeah.
9:00?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
All right, that works. When Ms. Owens talks about a cohesive, strong board, I'll never take that for granted. I'm serious. That's so important. All right, so that's done.
Well, that's why we do this, because we understand the importance of ours.
And then the, tomorrow, there is a FAD, Safety and Security Showcase in Orlando, and then there's going to be a superintendent's meeting tomorrow afternoon and I'll be Thursday. So Bill and I will be up there tomorrow evening and Thursday, but Terrence and Chief Luther, and I'm not sure, we got some other guys going on?
Yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow from the service.
Okay. Are going to go up to this, there's actually like a showcase, like a vendors, and they want to bring them all together, because you probably get these emails every day as well as I do, and so I know there's some, like, article, an article today in school security, we've been working very, very hard behind the scenes with our law enforcement partners, I know just the, the article today talked about Alice. We're really looking with our, with the local law enforcement guys on redoing our code reds, and we'll do extensive training on that and what that will entail, we'll present that to the board as well, probably in August, at a work session in August, but when our teachers come back, you know, it'll be some, there'll be some changes, there's going to be some changes to what we currently do, and, and tying some of the best practices around, around. So we also have, and I'm not going to ask Terrence to come up, we have an app that's going to go live next week, after we have our principals' meeting, there'll be an app where you can go, and it's really live now, where you can go onto the app itself and report whatever you need, see something, say something, see, see something, say something. We'll have an app as well regarding that, and I can share that, you know, give that information to you as well. So we are doing a lot in that area. We've got our, our different teams going out to the school centers, as required by state legislation, to, to look at our protocols, to look at our, our facilities, and we've got a lot of things that are going to be happening over the summer. Some of the schools, I'll give you an example of the footprint at Morningside and Lakewood Park, there's probably, there's a few more out there that are like that, we will, those will all be changed, well, there'll be like a, I don't know how to describe it, but it'll be a, a single point, we come in and you won't have access to the other hallways, where you'll go right into the, to the office we're directed in there, and a couple of other schools have some challenges as well, but we're working on that, and the staff's doing a nice job with that. And that being said, that concludes, that concludes what I've had.
So at this time, I'm recessing the April 24 work session, and would like to announce at this time that the board is commencing a private attorneys session, and the estimate length of that session will be about 30 minutes. The names of the persons that will be in that session is, of course, the members of the school board, Superintendent Wayne Jen, Jonathan Ferguson, our, the school's attorney, executive director of legal counsel, and our attorney, Dan Harrell, the school board, for the school board.